Good morning, everyone. And welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting this morning. It is Tuesday, March 21, 2023. It is 9:00 a.m., and we are in the community wing of City Hall. If I could ask you all to please rise and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. And following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Carly Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the Communications and Marketing Director with her hand raised, seated in the back. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium and provide their name and may speak for up to three minutes. This portion of public comment should focus on matters not on the agenda. Please direct all comments to the mayor, be concise and to the point. Avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. So those are our instructions for this morning. If I may ask, are there any members of the public that would like to come forward and speak, address city council members at this time?
My name is Merrill Shapiro, Rabbi Merrill Shapiro, a 17-year resident citizen voter here in Palm Coast. I am a very big advocate of what actually Jesus would have called "t'filah," that we would loosely translate as prayer. And I urge members of the council to spend a half hour before each meeting in the back room on their knees, seeking guidance from their respective understanding of God, but not to bring it into the public meeting. It is after all divisive. We are sufficiently divided. We don't need to be divided by religious belief and nonreligious belief as well. I urge you also, and I understand this is underway, to consult not with a lawyer when you want to become closer to God, but rather with local clergy, religious experts, and theologians. Otherwise, I assure you, you will be the butt of many jokes. And those religious leaders, looking at the initial proposal for invocations, it was very well crafted. The change, calling for religious leaders, of course, means that Christians, there's members of the Society of Friends who have no religious leaders, will be excluded from the invocation possibility, as will, of course, Palm Coast's good and lovely citizens who are atheists, agnostics, and free thinkers. So I would urge you to do that. On behalf of the Jews of the community, or I shouldn't speak on behalf, I'll speak of the Jews of the community, I can assure you that references to Jesus will be offensive, as mentioned in the policy. Jesus, of course, in the Gospel of John, Chapter 8, calls the Jews liars and satanic murderers. At the same time, you have Christians who often find prayer invocations that do not mention Jesus as ineffective, as not efficacious, that's not a prayer without the name of Jesus. And so you have a conundrum when you bring the invocations into the public sphere and when you say them out loud here. I would urge you to remain with the current system of a moment of silence, and that again will be a time when all of us can come together to create a better community, an even better Palm Coast, one of which we'll always be proud. I thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Mike Cociolo, Palm Coast. My question is why? Why all of a sudden does this council need to pray out loud? Is there something you're not doing, or you're not doing well, that prayer here in a public house, the house of the public, will help you make better decisions? If you're making bad decisions, tell us now. We're not sure that prayer is going to help you make those decisions. That's the question I need to ask, why? Then I need to ask, what are you going to pray to? A couple of members here said, "I won't pray to false gods." Well, who is to say? Are you making this decision for the public in Palm Coast as to who or what is the right God? How do you do that? How do you make those choices as to whose God is right? And then there are, of course, Rabbi Merrill said, then there are those religions without a God. Are they to be marginalized? Are they to come to this council and asking for equality, asking for representation, but thinking that, "Well, I don't follow their religion. I don't follow their God. What am I going to say to get their attention? Why would they even pay any attention to me at all?" So I would ask that you do answer that question, why, and then answer the question to which God. Because if you have a couple of people already on the council who are saying, "I won't pray to false gods," what are they going to do if somebody from the Hindu religion, somebody from the Jewish religion, somebody from any religion, who may not exactly believe what you do? Are those two members going to get up, turn their backs? Are they going to do that? Are they going to, in their minds, disparage the speaker? Is that what you're going to do? Because if I'm a speaker for Hindus, for Hinduism, for example, I would come here and say, "Well, they believe that I have a false God." What am I supposed to say to that? What are you supposed to say to that? It's too hard. Next, I've got a couple of seconds. I want to talk about the cost of this, let's call it a Pandora's Box, or opening a can of worms where you cannot stuff the worms back in the can. The problem is, is that if you're going to reach out as a community, somebody has to do that. Somebody has to vet that because somebody's stuck in the guidance, saying it has to be a religious leader. It can't be just any leader. Well, Rabbi Merrill Shapiro is a former rabbi. He's retired. Is he not a religious leader? He is in my world. So you exclude him? How do you make the decision that a speaker is valid or not? How do you cover the cost of your staffs, the city staffs, having to go out to the community, try to arrange all the schedules, get people here, vet everybody, and do that on a monthly basis? It's much too complicated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Two weeks ago, at the monthly night meeting, my daughter and my grandson and I came to the council, and we expressed our concern about the unsafeness of a lot of our parks, namely Ralph Carter and Holland Park. And I assumed, well, you know what happens when you assume, that somebody in the period of two weeks was going to get back to me. Nobody has. So you're going to probably sit there and tell me that I've got to fill out one of the cards. Well, the last time I filled out a card, I had a concern for the city, and I'm going to tell you right to your faces, who answered, who responded to me? The fire chief. Had nothing to do with the fire chief, nothing. But he was told by the city manager to respond to me. Well, so I would like the city today, today, I don't want to know tomorrow, or next week, or next month, because the, correct me if I'm wrong, the director of Parks and Recreation was here two weeks ago, never responded to me that night or since then, and I'm assuming that the director is still sitting back in the back of the room. So, that being said, I don't mean to be disrespectful to anybody in this room, including the mayor, because I've been through three mayors, and I think he's the best mayor that we've had in the last eight, nine years that I've been living in the city. So I don't mean to be disrespectful, especially to our mayor, but I'm going to lay the cards right on the table, and this is my New Jersey mentality, I guess, coming through. How much is a child's life worth? We hear every day on Facebook with the news that children are being kidnapped, murdered, shot. I don't want that to happen in Palm Coast, and I certainly don't want anything to happen to any child, no matter where they live. So let's put a stop to this now and do what we're asking, and I want an answer today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there a next speaker, please? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Carol Gunthorpe, and I'm a citizen of Palm Coast for the last 21 years. I'm here to address the issue of having a prayer prior to the meeting. Our country was founded by immigrants who fled their countries in order to have freedom of religion. As such, when they came here, they wanted to ensure that that freedom of religion would always be maintained. As such, they set up a system of strict separation of church and state. You are elected officials who represent a diversity of population. As such, you need to be sensitive to the needs of all of your constituents. I suggest that prayer is inappropriate here. It's the wrong venue for religious practices, belongs either in a church or state. Therefore, I urge you not to institute prayer at a meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I'm Bob Teller, City of Palm Coast. I want to talk about the issue of prayer in our meetings as well. This is nothing new. The separation of church and state, going back 200 years, was a hot potato from day one. Thomas Jefferson and James Madison were key figures in writing the constitutional elements that brought the separation of church and state. I can imagine these guys sitting and having a couple beers down the street from the Philadelphia Convention Center that they were framing the Constitution, and basically taking a look at what was going on in the colonies up and down the coast. They said, "We have all these people, ethnicities, all these religious backgrounds coming in, and so we're guaranteeing them a freedom of religion." But it should stop there. The government has no business getting into the business of religion. Religion doesn't have any business getting in the business of governing the colonies. Otherwise, we're going to be in the same mess that they're dealing with across Atlantic. You've got France, you've got England, they're all dealing with this business of religion and governance as well. So while they're looking at it, they said, "We need to embrace these religions. They're arriving on our shores by the boatload." No pun intended. They were there. They're coming in, and there are all these diversities. We've got to accommodate them, allow them to practice their religion freely and openly, but not bring it into the government circles. With that said, I'm encouraging you to stay with this moment of silence and not embrace the business of having prayer in your meetings. We're diverse, but right now, the country is divided. We need something that unifies this country, and it starts at the grassroots level. And I think right now, in municipalities such as ours, we need to think about what we're doing in that respect. Set an example for other communities around, and the business of a moment of silence is certainly that. It accommodates all the people, all the religions and backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please, yes.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I'm Mike Martin. I'm the chairman of the Board of Commissioners, East Flag Mosquito Control District. I'm here today, I guess you're going to be considering our FAA required waiver so we can fly a mandate. I know that's under consent agenda, but I just wanted to invite all of you to come and take a tour of the mosquito facility. Let us show you what we do, how we do it, why we do it, and you'll get a perspective. We'll take you for a flight. You'll see a different perspective of Palm Coast in the air. Mayor Alvin is already coming towards, so I just wanted to like the rest of you to come and take a tour, and, like I said, learn a little bit about what we do and take a different perspective from the city. So I just want to hand out some cards. If you want to, just contact me. Give them all.
Please.
Thank you.
And thank you for the invitation. Appreciate that. Are there any remaining speakers in the audience? I'm sorry, Mr. Martin, thank you for the invitation. Appreciate that.
Good morning, councilmembers and Mayor Alvin. I'm Donna Harkins, and a resident of Palm Coast. I'm here also to speak to the possibility of an invocation prior to public meetings. According to Cornell Law School's Legal Information Institute, President Thomas Jefferson referred to the case as creating a wall of separation between church and state. Additionally, Supreme Court Justice Hugo Black stated in Everson versus Board of Education that the First Amendment has erected a wall between church and state, and that wall must be kept high and impregnable. When you bring religious invocations into a government meeting, you destroy that wall. And although the proposed policy suggests that many different clergy members will be invited to perform invocations, I suspect that there will be fewer of some religions and many more of others. This is exclusionary and not fair to those other religions and to nonbelievers. And the suggestion that there will be time for those who aren't comfortable with the reading of an invocation to leave the room and then return upon its completion is ludicrous. To, you know, for people to have to get up and leave a room and then return is, again, exclusionary and just silly. I've been a resident of this community for nearly 25 years. I own property here, I shop here, I eat here, and I use local services. My tax dollars contribute to this community, and my time is valuable, as is everyone in the room and your own. So this getting up and leaving so that people can be accommodated can just be avoided by not having invocations at the beginning of a meeting. I'm sure the council can wake up five minutes earlier to pray at home, or in their car on the way here, or at their desk individually, or if they feel the need to pray as a group, they can meet privately prior to the meeting. And that's really it. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any remaining speakers that would like to address city council members at this time?
Yes, good morning. George Mayo, Palm Coast. On Saturday, March 4, I was up in Connecticut with my wife, arranging for a funeral for my stepson. I had a house sitter at my house and neighbors looking after my house during the day, and I got a call from them that my pep alarm was going off. Being in a hotel, my wife tried to get online for Palm Coast Connect and could not. So I called up, got the phone prompts from Palm Coast Siri, and you know, regular Siri, if you ask her for tickets to Chicago, she'll tell you where to buy bongos. So I called Palm Coast Siri, and what do you have when I got the proper prompt? Water leak, pep alarm, sewer problem, or other? And I said, "Pep alarm. You have a water leak?" "No." Start all over again. Let's start this again. What do you have? Water leak, pep alarm, et cetera? Pep alarm. You have a water leak? "No." What is your address? 10 Ziegler Place? 10 Cedar Place? "No." Try all over again. Hang up. What it was is I was using my cell phone because I was in Connecticut there, and my home phone was listed as my contact for the city. I have since corrected that it has both numbers, because I didn't want them to call my home phone and say what the problem is. When I got home a week later, yes, they had called my home phone and said, "We understand you have a problem." I tried a third time. Start all over again. You have a water leak? Where do you live? 10 Ziegler Place? "No." No, and no. Finally, I called up another number, just looking at public utilities, got just a phone message saying, "My name is George Mayo. I have a pep alarm. I live at, time of day is, could you please send this to the proper situation if anybody answers today?" Hoping that, I called up my neighbors, I said, I tried to call, one of my neighbors said, "I'm going to try and call the city." About a half hour later, I get a phone call from a Jason. Said, "Mr. Mayo, I'm from Palm Coast. Understand you have a water leak." "No." "Where do you live?" I says, "I have a pep alarm. Here's my address. I will give it to your proper authorities." About 45 minutes later, I get a call, my wife had since gotten on Palm Coast Connect and connected. After that, I got, my neighbors called up and said, "A City of Palm Coast man is there now. Zach was there, said I had a bad pump. He replaced the pump." So I'm here to ask you, can you please somehow fix Palm Coast Siri? When you get the prompts, maybe it would say, "Do you have a water leak? Press 1. Pep alarm? Press 2." When I spelled out, the second time I spelled out my address, it didn't understand. Maybe, like other alarms or Palm Coast series, will understand where you live. Maybe you can connect it to GPT, and it will understand. But, you know, it just made a sad situation into a really tense one, and I hope you can fix this. Thank you.
Thank you for your observations and your comment. Appreciate that. Are there any members of the public that would like to address city council members at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close this section of public comment, and I will ask our assistant city manager, are you able to, or will you respond to any comments now or after the meeting? There are some I'd like you to have Director connect with these folks after.
Yes, sir. I would ask James Hurst, our director of Parks and Recreation, to address Mr. McDonald's concerns, and then Mr. Mayo, I believe Mr. Flanagan can meet you and discuss the customer service issues.
Thank you. And the other items, you'll follow up as need be.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will close. Again, and I do appreciate, we all as city council members appreciate these comments. You have to tell us so that we know. I mean, we're not omniscient, hardware dispelled, and we expect you to please come forward and tell us, good or bad. Let us know, because that is our job and responsibility, to get those things corrected. We can always raise the bar higher, so please help us do that together. With that, I will close public comment. We'll move on to item E on the agenda, which is minutes. We have the minutes of the city council meeting, March 7, 2023, a business meeting. May I have a motion for those minutes? So moved. I have a motion from Councilman Clufus to approve, a second from the vice mayor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Yes, motion passes 5 to 10.
Similarly, I have the minutes for the workshop meeting held on March 14, 2023. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilperson Pontieri. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Vice Mayor Danko has seconded the motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Motion passes 5 to 10.
Thank you. Now I will yield to the clerk to help us through the process of appointments to two of our committees. One, first, we will look at the PLDRB, that's the Planning and Land Development Board. So if you would, please proceed.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Last week, you conducted interviews for the vacancy on the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board. Today is your vote. Both interviewees, applicants, are in attendance today, so if you have further questions, they are available. If you're ready to proceed to vote, I have the tally sheet.
Okay, before you pass that out, city council members, we heard presentations from both of the applicant. Have any additional questions for this morning?
No.
Ballot?
Sure. Your name is on the ballot, and if you take the top one as it comes along, place a check
Sorry, give the instruction again. You want us to check mark?
Yes, just one choice, either Mr. Ferguson or Mr. Mark Stansel.
Oh.
Eric. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now that the ballots are, are you ready? Collected, I especially want to thank both of the applicants. I think they both made very interesting and sincere presentations, and it was quite a difficult choice, at least for me personally. So again, I want to thank them, and I will then ask the clerk to verify the results of today's vote.
Yes, there are five votes for David Ferguson.
Congratulations, Mr. Ferguson. Do you have a comment to make?
Sure.
A brief comment to make.
Thank you for the confidence you've placed in me. I congratulate the runner-up based on what I read with about former candidates. There might be an opening in the future, who knows? But thank you for the consideration. I'll try to do the best job that I can.
We thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Clerk, can go ahead and proceed now with the second part of this?
Sure. So the next item is for the Beautification and Environmental Advisory Committee. One applicant emailed this morning, he is homesick, and there is one applicant that is here, Mr. Marciano. The appointment is for two, and we have two applicants. There is no voting tabulation for you since there's two and two, so it's how council would like to proceed.
Okay. Council, there had been a suggestion to delay the appointment because one of the applicants was unavailable. Do you feel that's necessary? Are there questions that you would like to ask that applicant? We could delay it. However, I must remind you that there is a meeting coming up, which would be in advance of the next time we could see them. Personally, I'm feeling I'd like to move forward so that that meeting can happen with a full attendance. Is that, I'll ask each one of you if that's okay.
That's fine by me.
I've read their applications, and I don't have any further questions. I think that's fine.
You don't? Good?
Yep. I'd love to get one of them.
Okay, so we have a consensus, so I guess what I'll do is I'll ask for a voice vote, and can I ask for both of them at the same time? So all of those in favor of, and give me the two names, please.
Mr. Jones and Mr. Marciano.
Of approving Mr. Jones and Mr. Marciano for appointment to the Beautification Committee? What's the proper name?
Beautification and Environmental Advisory Committee.
Beautification and Environmental Advisory Committee. Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the vote?
Yes, unanimous decision to appoint Mr. Jones and Mr. Marciano.
Very good. So I would thank the applicants again for their willingness to step forward, to volunteer. This is how you can actually assist and make your city, you can help to build the city in your own vision and share your vision with city council for the future. So again, I thank both of the So again, I thank both of the applicants for the time it took, and I look forward to their participation in our very important board, so thank you for that. We now move to item G on the agenda, which is our resolutions. So G four, council, if you would read that item into the minutes, please.
Of course. This is a resolution regarding fiscal year two thousand twenty-one dash two thousand twenty-two Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, accepting the annual comprehensive financial report as presented by the external audit firm of James &amp; Moore &amp; Company, P.L., providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, council. When you're ready.
Hi, everybody, I'm Webb Shepherd, partner with James Moore &amp; Company. This is the annual audit for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. First of all, a big thank you to city council. As always, it's an honor and a pleasure to serve in this capacity, and we appreciate it. Also, a big thank you to Helena and Shannon especially, but all the staff, the finance staff. I mean, we, we ask for a lot of information and we appreciate the timely responses. You all are always very timely, and we certainly appreciate that, very helpful. We didn't audit the batteries. Have to turn it on.
Roger.
There it is. So first, we'll go through the independent auditor's report with the emphasis on independent, of course, we are independent of city staff. So the first bullet here is the audit on the, is the report on the financial statements here. It's an unmodified opinion, which of course is the best opinion that we can provide for you. It states that we take a top-down approach to auditing management's financial statements. States that we are independent, we work for you, city council, not for management. Responsibility is to form and express an opinion that your financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The second bullet there is the internal control report, that one's required by governmental auditing standards. States that we consider internal control but do not provide an opinion on its operating effectiveness. We found no material weaknesses or instances of noncompliance as a result of our audit procedures, which again, that's the report that you want to see, the best one that we can provide there. The last bullet there is what we call the single audit report. That one's required anytime you have more than seven hundred fifty thousand in federal or state awards. In two thousand twenty-two, you all had one point three million in federal and four point four in state. We found no material weaknesses or instances of noncompliance as a result of our audit procedures. Again, that's the report you want to see, the best one that we can provide to you. Few more reports, lots of reports, of course. The next, the top bullet there, that's what we call the AG letter. That one's required by the auditor general. They require that we look at certain things, primarily your financial condition assessment and other key metrics along the way. We found no exceptions as a result of our audit procedures, again, that's the report that you want to see there. There's the examination report, it states you're in compliance with specific things or anything else to report there. And the third one is, you had a separate CRA audit, which is required now for the third year. This one's required by Florida statutes, and there are no additional comments in regard to that. We can provide you a separate report if you want, it should be in your packages there, but there's, there's nothing in there to report, again, that's the one that you want. Little bit about your, the city's financial health. All funds are in compliance or exceed the fund balance policy. Those are in note seventeen to the financial statements. Your overall financial condition assessment is favorable. That's the auditor general metrics that we go through that we discussed in our meetings with you all one-on-one. And I appreciate you all giving us the time to meet with us, I really appreciate that. These are the components of your general fund fund balance here, which can be found on page forty-three of the financial statements. These are mostly comparable, you know, the increase in unassigned is primarily due to expenditures finishing the year under budget, combined with the unassigned fund balance decrease from prior year. So the non-spendable category there is the prepaid, you know, the committed is your disaster reserve fund, so. Little more about your general fund. So your internal fund balance policy states that you are, you would like to be between ten and twenty percent of the following year's budgeted expenditures. So the GFOA is the Governmental Finance Officers Association. They recommend at least sixty days or seventeen percent. So you all are right in there. And where you sat at the end of the year was about four months or thirty-six percent. So just want to, we like to highlight that to let you know kind of where you stand at year end. These are your other governmental funds, of course excluding the general fund. Restricted is really your impact fees, committed is capital projects. The unassigned there is the Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund. Your business-type funds, unrestricted net position can be found on pages forty-seven and forty-eight. Really, the increases in utility and stormwater, you all are planning for future projects and system improvements. Everything else is pretty comparable. There's an increase in the building permits fund, that's your non-major, that's primarily what that increase from three or four million was. And then your internal service funds are your self-insurance, IT, and fleet management. Little more about your, and we're almost finished, I promise. Little more about your business-type funds. The utility fund unrestricted fund balance as a percent of next year's budgeted expenditures and transfers. So your fund balance policies are the same across all your funds. Utility fund is at twenty-one percent, solid waste is at fourteen percent, and stormwater is almost twenty-nine percent there, so all exceed or meet your fund balance policies, which is what we like to see. Just a few highlights. Two point nine million deficit in the Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund. You all had six point two five in ARPA funding received in fiscal two thousand twenty-two. Of course, you had the fifteen point two capital contribution of the driving range land. And there was a new accounting standard implemented this year, which is GASB eighty-seven. GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, so they issue new pronouncements here and there. And this was a pretty big one, the leases implementation was a pretty significant undertaking, which again, we appreciate city staff and Helena and Shannon primarily working so hard to get that implemented. What it did was there was a lease receivable recorded of about four point two million. That's offset by a liability, which is called a deferred inflow, but you basically had to capitalize those leases. On the least payable side, you had about four hundred and thirty-four thousand recorded, a right-to-use asset and a lease liability, so those kind of offset each other, but it's just a different way of recording those leases. Your advances to other funds can be found in note eight, you know, the utility fund collects about five percent interest on that loan to the Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund. Your long-term debt, there was an eight million dollar addition for the Series two thousand twenty-two loan. SRF loans increased about three million between utility and stormwater for your ongoing projects there. Overall, long-term debt of the city increased about one point five million. And then your retirement plans can be found in note eleven. So the volunteer firefighters carry a net pension asset of five hundred thousand. And then your FRS, I think you have eight left in FRS, eight participants left. That carries with it a net pension liability of one point seven million. And then all of your other employees are in a defined contribution plan, which carry zero net pension liability. And of course, these are a few additional services we offer, so please keep us in mind if you ever need any assistance. Any questions?
So I just have two, two brief comments. First, for the, for the benefit of the public, James Moore has had an appointment with each one of the city council members individually in advance of this meeting, so we have already gone through much of the detail. And every page of the lengthy document is available in, as a public record in today's agenda, if I'm not mistaken, so it's there. And city council members have taken the time to go through it, so I understand that going through this much detail with these numbers for the public on first blush is difficult, but I just wanted everyone to know that we have gone through it, both individually with you and then on our own. Could you just finish up for my question and tell me what other companies or local firms you work with, if you're able to do that? I want the public to be aware of the caliber of your firm and also the fact that you have to rotate out. We can't continue to use you indefinitely.
So how, what we, I can't disclose of private companies, but local governments.
Yeah, local government, like us.
We work, yeah, absolutely, so we are a firm of about, we're pushing three hundred employees now, we have five locations throughout Florida. And we audit, I believe we're up to around fifty municipalities, primarily in Florida, yes. So the rotation is not a mandatory thing, but of course, you all, we come up for, I think in another couple of years, you all will go out for bid again, so.
Very good, and just lastly, just to underscore, the, the rating that your firm has offered based on having gone through all of our records is, is really the highest rating that you're able to offer.
Absolutely.
So we have great confidence in that. So I would ask city council members, vice mayor, any, any comment or question on, on the presentation?
No comments, other than thank you once again. Been through this a few times with you now, so I appreciate all the work and effort you put into it.
Thank you. Counselperson.
Thank you, I would also like to echo gratitude for the work that you've done and to our city staff. I know there's a lot of work that goes into this, and you all are, I think, in the midst of three different budgets right now, so I appreciate what you've done. Also, for the benefit of the public, because I have been through all of the documents, but could you please explain just why it is, in your opinion, we are deemed to have a favorable audit or a favorable financial position, even though our, our long-term debt, as you've described it, has increased by one point five million dollars?
So the favorable financial condition assessment is based on about thirty different indicators that the auditor general puts out and compares you against other similar-sized municipalities. I think there were ten or fifteen in that population that you all are benchmarked against. And it looks at increases and decreases in a lot of the different balances and also the activity in your funds, so not only the balance sheet, but the income statements in all of the different funds. Interestingly, as you are sort of accumulating these funds to plan for future projects, it triggers a more favorable financial condition because you are sort of, your fund balances are increasing and your, your, you know, your cash balances are kind of increasing. It, that's not an automatic, that's just sometimes how it plays out. So as you start spending for future projects, it's likely that it will trend more toward the, the middle or average range. And then you just don't want to really fall into the unfavorable area, which is, I think you're a long way from that, so that's, that's good news.
And if I may, I would just like to point our residents, because it is quite a lengthy document, but something to just point out, the, the positive growth of our city. On page ten of the report, there's an economic outlook that really describes some of the positive notes that our city has improved upon in the last year. And then also on page thirty, there's a government-wide overall financial analysis that provides a very big Thank you.
Counselperson.
I'd just like to say thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate the one-on-one that I had with you. And I'd also like to say thank you for all the questions and clarifications that you made to me on the questions that I did have about the audit and about the budget process. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor.
For sure, I would just like to echo fellow councilmen and councilwoman's comments. I would say thank you to our staff for always being attentive to any of the needs that are required for this type of assessment. And this is not my first rodeo either, and I'm always impressed by how well the team all works together, it's very synergistic, if I use a buzzword there. And my second comment would be, take that SVB, right?
And just finally, assistant city managers, my understanding that when we next move into the, when we move into the next phase of the strategic action plan process, we'll have an economist come and speak to us. And Counselperson Pontieri, what would be good is if we will take your notes and compare it to the forecast that the economist has, because that would give us a resounding positive and support for the direction that the city is moving in. So, good point, and we'll back that up with the economist that's coming. Economist is from UNF, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, sir, University of North Florida.
A well-known, published economist, we'll, we'll back that up. So thank you very much for the work, and again, I, I know that staff is the engine behind this, so we have to shout out that staff made your job easier. So I'm sure you'll thank them as much as we do as well, so thank you all.
Yes.
Very good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the.
Excuse me, you have to, is this the resolution?
I'm sorry, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the, on this presentation, please? Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mike Martin, Montez Woods. How can the public get a copy of this report? Because it's not, I don't see it available anywhere here.
I think I mentioned before, it's, it's in the agenda, but we can certainly offer you a copy, a hard copy, if you like.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close this, this item for public comment, and thank you.
We need a resolution, we need adoption of the resolution.
Sure, I'll, I'll make the motion to adopt this resolution.
So I have a motion to adopt the resolution as presented from Councilman Clufus, may I have a second?
Vice Mayor Danko seconded that.
I have a second from Vice Mayor Banker, any further discussion? So let's do a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Carly Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Affirmative.
Mayor Alpin?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next resolution for review this morning would be number five, and council, if you would read that in for us, please.
Of course, this is a resolution regarding a find application waterfront park Phase Two. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving a Florida Inland Navigation District Waterways Assistant Program Grant Application for waterfront park Phase Two, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the contracts, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, counselor. Mr. Coe, would you like to just kind of summarize your presentation that you had done before?
Yes, Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering Department. Today, I'll just give you a brief update on waterfront park. Our, we have a longstanding history with Florida Inland Navigation District. They support the city on the intercoastal waterway cleanup, as well as the walkway along the intercoastal, Long Creek Nature Preserve, and some additional Long Creek Navigation enhancements that we did there, as well as waterfront park. Waterfront Park is one of our hubs, parks, it's very active location. You can see along the intercoastal waterway, there's other waterway access points throughout the city or county. This is history of find support specific to waterfront park. Back when the, the park was first designed, we received grants for that portion, as well as the construction of that first initial park construction. Then we recently received three-year grants for the current work that's currently underway, Part One, Part Two, and Part Three. That was a program they implemented where we could stretch those dollars out over three years to garner more, more dollars for a particular project. So Phase A is currently under construction, that's going to provide some dredging, some stabilization, and a dock installation. The grant award for those three years is a little over thirty-three thousand. Our city match is a little bit more than that, seven hundred nineteen thousand, because not all items are eligible, grant-eligible components. And then the, the city CEI contingencies. And then the city's CEI contingencies, so the total project cost that's out there on the construction now has a value of a little over $1.4 million. We had a future phase to expand parking and amenity accessibility. The grant request, that application that's before you today, is to submit a grant for requesting $360,000 from find, with the city match of just over $688,000 approximately. These are just estimated construction costs at this point, and then the city's CEI and contingency costs. So a total project cost of almost $1.2 million. So that's Phase One under construction there. Phase Two is going to be back here in this cleared, open area. And then this is kind of a blow-up showing the current work up along the upper side, along the waterway, and then the future parking, which is the grant application we submit now. The way the current process works is we apply for the grant in the spring, find board goes through, review, scoring, criteria evaluation of all the applications. We typically make a presentation June or July, and then they score and adopt it as part of their budget process. And if we're awarded the grant, that would occur in October. So the design and permits is wrapping up at this point in time, and we would expect, if we receive the grant, that we would move forward with construction in fiscal year '24.
Just remind me, how long has this project been in the works? When was it first conceived, approximately?
Over 10 years. It was part of the master plan, but during the initial phase, only a portion of the project was built, so as time went on, we started exploring grants.
So we can see the final look after... The question I have, to remind me, how many access points to intercoastal waterway with city limits of Palm Coast?
This is the only direct access point.
Obviously, it's a gem that is, that we've worked with for a very long time, and I'm glad to see that we're finally getting to the finish line. And from a budget standpoint, the capital improvement has already been budgeted for the work that's here, is that correct?
Yes. The balance of those dollars are going to be made up from park impact fees.
Very good, okay. Sorry, questions from city council members?
The last question you asked was the question I was going to ask, and I want to thank you for the answer, Carl. I'm good.
Very good.
So just to, thank you, Mayor, just to further expound on the budgeting of this, what did you base the estimate on?
They are based on some of the current projects. It was done by our consultant engineer, based on projects they have out to bid and receive bids on for unit cost, as well as using some FDOT statewide averages or regional averages on material costs, with some escalation built in as well.
And that was going to be my question, do we have that escalation built in? So based on what you've got estimates for with the escalation, we have budgeted for that amount?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And just one more comment, I'm sorry, I just always want to thank find. You all are such a huge supporter and very present here in Flagler, so thank you.
Counselperson, I appreciate your point. So we've had discussions up here about the increase in costs due to materials and also supply chain, and they're, they've been very unpredictable. So I think it behooves us to continue to ask that question, that we build in reasonable expectations on escalation, because I don't, none of us know if that's going to change. And so I appreciate that. Counselperson.
I have no questions.
Counselman Clufus.
I have no questions, but I would like to thank staff and also find. The Flagler Inland Navigation District has always been an incredible partner of Palm Coast, and this is, this may be our only water access, but it is a beautiful and it is an incredible facility, and expanding the services that we allow our residents to utilize in our city is a phenomenal thing, so thank you to everyone.
So I can't, I can't quite end yet. I have to ask retired Captain Randy Stapelford, who is our find, Florida Inland Navigation District Commissioner, to please come to the podium and just describe your relationship with our city, because you don't only serve our city, am I correct? But we are your favorite city.
Amen.
Without putting any words into your mouth.
Thank you for inviting me here, Mr. Mayor. You are my favorite mayor, and no doubt about it. But yes, we support the 12 counties of Florida, the Atlantic Inland Coastal Waterway, about 400-plus miles that, we just met again in Indian River. Some of the issues that Carl has addressed to the council here today are so true, because costs do go up. And so you never can expect what it might be next year, particularly if you have a delay in getting a permit. So it's so important to get the permits out, get those approved, so you can have a pretty good idea how much it's going to cost you in the end. This project, as Carl has mentioned, has been going on for 10 years. What we see right now is really part of the most beautiful beautification of that waterfront park. I think it's going to be a magnificent world-class park when it's all done. This grant, we sat down with Carl and Eric and Denise and yourself, Mr. Mayor, and it looks like a well-put-together plan, and we're looking forward to having it briefed in June in Brevard, and hopefully we'll have a consensus vote of giving you the full grant that you requested.
So the only other ask I have is that, I know you work closely with our Congressman Waltz.
Yes.
And I would ask you to please share our council's investment and dedication to green space and the environment. And I would also ask you to push that up to Tallahassee, because I know both the governor and our speaker have that at top of mind in their agendas. So I'd like to make the most of that and show them, tell them that we are doing our part, leading the way here in Palm Coast.
I have passed that multiple times, Mr. Mayor, and we are doing our best to get that deepening of the intercoastal waterway to about 46 feet for that carrier to come through. We're looking for it.
I'm never going to live that one down, okay? It just doesn't go fast enough to water ski. We'll work on that, though.
Thank you.
Thank you very much again.
You're welcome.
Mr. Coe, thank you for your presentation, and with that, I would open up this item to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment on this item to city council members at this time? Yes, sir?
All right, Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. You're going to have to bear with my ignorance a little bit, but that's how I get to be smart. Correct me if I'm wrong, a grant is somebody with a whole lot of money, gives it to us and says, here, do something with it. That's a grant. A grant does not have to be paid back. Now, the part that I got confused about was where it says Palm Coast Matching Funds. Okay. Now, like I said, I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer. But if I come to you and I say, I need $100, and you give me the $100 that I need, that's matching funds, that's matching. It's dollar-for-dollar. So all of those numbers that we all got showed, the number between the grant and the matching funds is like astronomical difference. So if somebody could explain to me why, or what the definition, or the legal definition of matching funds is, because as far as I know, matching funds are dollar-for-dollar, not you pick a number and then I'll pick a number.
So let me take a shot from a layman's point of view, and then I can ask a counsel if they have a... So the word "match" has a larger definition than dollar-for-dollar. Depending on the type of grant, or where the grant originates from, or what dollars it comes from, grants can be anywhere from 20% of the total to 100% of the total. So there is a scale depending on the grant that is not necessarily dollar-for-dollar. The reason it's there is because the grantor wants to be sure that the grantee is all-in, that they're putting some of their own investment into the project. But take away the dollar-for-dollar, there are very few grants that I've seen lately that come dollar-for-dollar. They have different scales to them. Counselor, do you have a comment on that? Go ahead.
But a grant is one thing, and matching funds is another.
Correct.
Right. So a grant is money that you don't have to pay back. It's like a student loan. If you go and apply for a grant to go to school and they give you $1,000, you don't have to pay that $1,000 back.
Correct.
That's a grant.
Correct.
Okay, but matching funds is dollar-for-dollar. It can't be any other way. That's what they call match. The left hand puts the right hand together, and together they wash the face.
So you have to buy a ticket to the dance. Maybe that's the best way I could say it. In other words, in order to qualify for the dance of the grant, there's an entry fee, and that's the investment that the city would make in this project, which has been budgeted out according to our capital improvement plan.
Yeah, but I'm not disputing the grant money. I'm not disputing that. If somebody wants to give us money, God bless them, okay? But my concern is matching funds. And if somebody's going to give me $100 and I got to pay them back, that's what's matching. I only pay back 100, I don't pay back 1,000. So somebody, maybe the city attorney, can explain to me why matching funds is such a significant difference.
So I'm going to suggest this, if you agree. I'm going to ask Captain Stapelford, because he is responsible to the federal government on the construction of the grant. In other words, he can explain better than an attorney.
I'm not concerned about the grant money. I don't care where the grant money came from.
Let me say it a different way.
The grant money could come from any place. I don't care.
Okay.
My concern is, I don't have to pay back that grant money. Me, as a taxpayer, don't have to pay back the grant money.
Right.
But matching funds, I got to reach into my pocket and pay that. That's what I'm concerned about.
Okay, so the find organization requires the city to pay a match in order to earn the grant. So the grant is not just coming to us, there's a, I don't want to get off, I don't want to use the wrong word. There's a requirement, a legal requirement, for us to participate in the project along with the grant. And you are correct, the grant is coming from federal funds, the match is coming from the city of Palm Coast.
I think a better way to describe it is, to qualify for the grant money, a condition of that qualification is that you have to put up funds, matching funds, to a certain percentage.
Matching. That's the key word that we're stumbling on, is matching.
But matching can be up to a certain dollar amount. It doesn't have to be matching dollar-for-dollar, that's what we're getting at, matching, and I understand your definition, you're saying one-to-one, that's not the way that it works.
So that's not matching.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Okay, now I understand.
And I appreciate, it's not intuitive that the word "match".
In order to get the grant money, the people that are going to give us the grant, they want to know that we got money in our pocket.
Exactly.
Okay.
That we can finish the project.
So we got the money in our pocket, but still, nobody's explaining to me why it's not dollar-for-dollar. If I, if the city's going to give me $1,000, okay, they want to know that I got $1,000, that I can back that up. Okay, well, I got the $1,000, but if I got $2,000, they're only still going to get $1,000. Okay.
All right, thank you for your comment. Yes, sir.
I hope that I can clarify that. In order to have a one-to-one matching grant, the grantor has to give you 50% of the total budget. That's not always the case. You only can get a grant of so much money from any entity that's giving out the money. So we are matching the funds that we are getting from the Florida Inland Navigational District, but the project itself is more expensive than that, so we are then spending additional monies to complete the project. I think that's...
Okay, and I appreciate that. And Mr. McDonald, what I would, when you can, have a brief conversation with Captain Stapelford, because he can put it in better and more correct terms than I can, because he truly is an expert, and I think he'll be able to clarify very, very well for you, if that's okay.
Mayor, may I make just a suggestion as well? So it's a misnomer, the way that it's probably on the slide right now, which is adding to the confusion. I think for the benefit of the residents and council, Mr. Cody included the total budget amount that we were putting in, just to show our skin in the game, plus the amount above and beyond the actual match itself, to finish this project. So perhaps in the future, we break those numbers up, if it will clarify anything with the actual matches versus what else we are adding in that we've already budgeted for to complete a project. Just a suggestion, I don't know if it's practicable, but it may help clarify things in the future.
Yeah, and these, again, are just engineer-estimated costs in the application, there is a table of the breakdown, there are elements that they will not fund, they have to be directly related to waterway access improvement, so they don't cover items such as landscaping and those items, so we have to fully fund those portions of the project. So that's why that match isn't, you know, one-to-one overall, as well as they have a cap on how much funds they have available for a project, you know, county-wide, that will get split up.
And I'll defer again to Captain Stapelford, because this is what he does every day. He can give you a really good explanation of what Carl just said in layman's terms, which I will, I will ask the question as well. Thank you.
Now I understand.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public that would, yes, sir?
I'll just make a very quick comment for you, sir. The Waterway Assistance Project, WAP, that's part of the Florida Inland Navigational Budget, that's a piece of it, and that goes for the improvement of waterway assistance projects for counties. Of that request, that the county or the city or Flagler County in the cases can make, it's a 50-50 waterway assistance project, 50-50 grant. So if you're asking for a $800,000 project and you're asking us for $20,000, you have to at least come in with $20,000 to qualify, okay? And then, of course, as the project shows here, there's a lot of things that are beautifications to that land piece of property that are not within the realm that we can pay for. So this is just one of the many ways of doing it. It's 50-50, it is a state grant, it's not federal, even though we are working 50-50 with the Army Corps of Engineering. So it's mostly a Florida Inland Navigational District tax that you pay, and it's the public that's paying that money that comes back to the city at their request.
And we look forward to even larger grants in the future, so...
Looking forward to it.
We look forward to your hard work, thank you for that. So if there were no other members of the public that would like to address city council members at this time, I will close public comment. Any additional questions or discussion for city council at this time? Then I guess I would ask for a motion, please? Does the clerk have the count?
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. And we move to our final resolution this morning, which would be item number G6. Counselor, if you would read that in for us, please.
Of course. This is regarding the Parks and Recreation Fee Structure, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving, amending the Parks and Recreation Fee Structure, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute said agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. We had a good presentation at our workshop, so would you be willing to summarize that for us again now?
Yeah, so last week, we brought to council just a small presentation on amending our fees for year-round operations at the Aquatic Center, and then establishing new fees for our Southern Recreation Center. During the week, Ms. Johnson sent everyone a kind of summary of some of the questions you had for us from last week. So we're here, we don't really have a presentation, but we're here to answer any further questions anyone might have, so whenever everyone's ready.
So I'll start. City council, questions from the last presentation that we saw?
I have none.
Okay.
I just want to thank you all for, and Ms. Johnson, for sending the follow-up information. It appeared from what I could see that the cost recovery for the tennis center at the Southern Recreation Center, and also the aquatics, that cost recovery comes up short, but it looks like our programs are making up for that?
Yes, correct. We make sure that our programs are all cost recovery, sorry, cost recovery, yeah.
So I just want to encourage a really ongoing emphasis on increasing that percentage of cost recovery. I know there's always an effort to do that from you all, but just really want to emphasize that, especially as we look to improve our parks, and we're doing this survey right now with the citizens, so thank you for your hard work.
All right, no worries. Thank you, Counselperson. Any additional comments?
Thank you for the presentation, and no further questions.
I have no additional comments, and thank you for the additional back-and-forth communications we had.
Okay. I just want to add one footnote, which I think was mentioned. We are aware from the media and from news reports that one of the other facilities, the other pool in town, may or may not go forward, I don't know. I had asked that you all consider that and have that somehow built in in various ways. I don't want that to be a surprise, that a decision is... that a decision is made and all of a sudden, we have a, you know, an unexpected usage of our facility. So I feel comfortable and confident that you've considered that, so we can handle it, whichever decision is made on the other facility. Is that...
Yep.
Just wanted to hear you say it.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, I would ask, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I would comment also that this is one of those treasured amenities, so I do hope that we get additional information from the residents on the survey and the collaborative effort with the county, because it is important to us for the future. So with that, any additional discussion here? Then I would ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Vice Mayor Danko makes a motion to approve. May I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Clufus, second. Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you for your presentation. We now move to item H on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. I would first go to city council members. Are there any discussed further before we move forward?
No.
None.
Nor do I. So I would ask the public, are there any items in the consent agenda that you would like to discuss at this time? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'll close public comment. Any additional discussion on the dais? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Vice Mayor Danko makes a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilperson Pontieri seconds the motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We now move to the next item, number 10. Counsel, if you would read that in for me, please.
I think we're at public participation, unless I'm missing something. City clerk, can you verify?
Yes, item 10 is part of the consent agenda.
Items seven through 11 are consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. My fault. It went on a different page. I apologize. Thank you for reminding me. So with that, I will open up for public participation. Are there any items that were not on today's agenda that the public would like to comment on at this time?
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. In the beginning of the public comments, at the early part of the meeting, there was a lot of residents who got up and spoke their minds on the new moment of silence. Maybe, maybe to make everything nice-nice. Maybe instead of doing the way we've been doing it lately, maybe we could just all stand and say a moment of silence for all of our service personnel and everybody that's protected this country, that we can still stand up and pledge our allegiance to that flag. So maybe if we're going to do that, maybe as a suggestion, only as a suggestion, we could offer a moment of silence for all of our police officers, firefighters, and especially our military, because I don't know how anybody else feels, but at the end of our day, no matter how good or how bad of a day we've had, and we go home to our families, kiss our wife, hug our kids, I think that's what we gotta keep doing. So maybe you guys can all rethink this different moment of silence. God rest his soul in heaven. My mother always used to tell me, it's not what you say, it's how you say it. So maybe we could just, you know, revisit this idea and we could do it like Frank Sinatra said, "We did it my way." Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and appreciate your thoughts. All right, if there are no other members of the public that would like to address city council members at this time, I will close the public comment section and move next to city council members for points they would like to bring up for matters not on today's agenda. Vice Mayor?
Well, speaking of the Park and Recreation Survey, I had a lot of people contact me this weekend, very upstices on that survey. Or what do you identify as? First place, what do you identify as probably has nothing to do with anything in that survey. Pointless. Second, this is nothing more than woke indoctrination to me, and it needs to stop. I will never embrace this insane liberal wokeness, especially in Palm Coast and Flagler County in the state of Florida. I don't ever wanna see a question like that again. I can't tell you how many people called me or approached me upset about this, and I don't blame them. So what I'd like to do today is make a motion that henceforth, as we go forward, every survey gets made available to this council for our own comments or suggestion at least a week before we put it out there. So if we see something that concerns us or might concern our residents, we have a chance to address it with our city manager.
All right, Vice Mayor, so I have a motion on the floor at this time. So the first thing would be, is there a second?
I'll second the motion for discussion purposes.
So we have a second, so let's open up the discussion. Let me first ask Assistant City Manager, is there any problem with having city council review questionnaires, which I believe are created by a third party, before they are sent out to the public?
We can make that as part of... This consultant was one that the city and the county hired together to do this product for us. It was identified in their scope of service. There's gonna be several additional surveys that come to city council as we review the comp plan. So it's a part of that service that we're rendering with...
So it's a collaboration between the city and the county, so the county has the same piece. But I guess I'm really asking from an administrative standpoint, is there a... Can we build in on the timeline? Because I would also be in favor of having a chance to review it. I'll say, I'm gonna jump over you just for a second. I had a comment about the length of the survey, because, you know, some surveys, and I'm not a survey expert, but when you get long enough, you start to lose the energy, the excitement, and perhaps the vision and the direction which the consulting firm was probably trying to build in, but I took exception with that part of the survey. My, my, I just wanna... Being able to send it out in advance, and then you would have to talk to each city council member independently, because we're not in the sunshine, collect their comments back. Is that doable?
I worry about the part where it's done independently, because then we're not building consensus on what the survey questions say. And then from administratively, we would just have to buffer kind of that into our timeline for whatever project we're surveying the residents upon.
So I'm sorry, help me with your concern about independently.
So if we're independently asking you to review the questions, one council member may speak differently than another on that particular question or survey, and then we don't have consensus. So, you know...
But you didn't have consensus if it wasn't sent to us in the first place.
Well, you're trusting administration to put forth that with the consultant.
Okay, so...
I think what, I think the thing is, what I'm hearing from city councils is that you wanna take a look at these surveys and be able to provide feedback on them before they go out to the public, which, you know, absolutely is within the discretion to do.
Which is a standard part of a SAP process as well.
And so what Lauren's concern is, and I hear that, is that, for example, if one question, one city council member feels very strongly about in one way, and another one feels differently, you're leaving it up to staff to make that decision, when what you're asking them to do is, you know...
No, no, no. We're asking that they can come back to this council during your own comments.
Staff could then bring it back.
Right. I think what Lauren meant was, like, if you did it just independently, we would wanna bring it so you could discuss it before it went out.
We'll need to hash through that, which is fine. I think that's fine. And Vice Mayor, I appreciate you bringing it up, because this is the second instance that I'm aware of where there was a, perhaps, in the survey which didn't meet the vision of city council. I think there was another episode. I don't remember the detail.
I remember.
So as long as we're not going to add an extensive expense or lengthen the timeline, that we can get it to city council members, if there is a conflict, an opinion that can go back to city council, then I would support that.
I had people call me and ask me why I put that question in the survey. And I'm like, what question? Because I hadn't read all the way through the survey yet.
Understandable.
And I think it's very important it comes back to us. We can be sent the questions ahead of time, and then if any council member has a concern, we can bring it up at the next council meeting.
And I like the idea that puts us to task as city council members, because at the end of the day, it's us, okay?
Staff. I mean, people think, "We wrote this." They don't realize that staff put it together.
Very good.
So we're accountable.
Councilperson Pontieri, a comment? Are you in agreement with the discussion so far?
Yeah, I don't have any objection to it. I would say if it's possible to add it to a workshop, like, you know, for instance, if we already know what the content of a survey will be, and it's possible to kind of front-load this and put it as a part of the materials for the workshop, that would probably be the most prudent thing to do. But otherwise, bringing it up at a city council meeting during this process, I think is fine.
And we, I can't speak for everybody, but I think I'm getting consensus. This would become a normal part of our operating administrative procedure regarding surveys, okay? Councilperson?
I agree that it would be a good idea for us to be able to review the surveys prior to them being sent out. I'm in agreement with that.
Councilman?
Yep, I think it's great. I'm not certain that we need like a formal resolution or anything like that. That's where my stance is, is just be daily operations. But that's a great expectation to have, is that we'll give it at least one shot to look at it as a council before it goes out to the public.
All right, Vice Mayor, thank you for that comment. Anything else today?
Did I have a motion on the table? Motion is that we make this a motion, that we actually do this. Because we suggested this before the last time, that, you know, it should be run by us, and obviously, that didn't work.
Okay, so I need you to frame that motion, and then I need staff to hear...
Well, I think the motion on the table is that city council would like to review surveys before they are submitted out to the public.
Right, that they're made available to us within at least a week. Maybe we need two weeks.
Well, see, that's why I'm putting the brakes on just for a second. Because the other piece of this is it would have to get back to city council if there is a difference in opinion. So there's kind of a part B to this, so it's hard to fit the time to it. So what I was gonna ask is, could we ask staff, can I ask staff to draft a policy regarding survey?
I don't know that you need a formal policy for it. I mean, we have a, we actually, in my opinion, I think we just need consensus to staff to say, but there's a motion on the table in a second.
I'm with you. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Does it need to be restated for anybody? We all got it?
I just wanna make sure we're on a, do we say a reasonable amount of time, or one week? I mean, I'm willing to tweak it like that.
Even the way it is, it's fine. I think we have consensus, and I think that's what councils are looking for.
I think your intent is that you get the survey well in advance, so that you at least have one shot to discuss, if you have to, during city council comments, before the survey goes out and changes.
I mean, clearly, if a survey comes out and none of us raises concern, then there's no concern. But if a survey comes out, whether it's a question that we might get pushed back on or too long, you think, I think we should be the final set of ayes.
Very good. Okay, I think you've made your motion clear, so... Does this require public comment?
No.
Doesn't, right? So I would ask, just consensus voice vote, all in favor of Vice Mayor Danko's motion? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Very good.
Motion passes five to zero.
Clerk has it. Thank you.
I have nothing further.
Councilperson Pontieri, anything else? Final comments today?
Yes, I have a handful, so if, thank you, Mayor, for just allowing me a few minutes. So first of all, I want to just congratulate, there were three graduates from Drug Court that I attended last week. And getting through that program is quite exhaustive. It's a very stringent program, and it's something great that our county offers. So I do want to congratulate those graduates. I was very privileged to be there, and I want to thank the people that contribute to that program, because I do think that it's something that can help recidivism in our county, and it's something that's very necessary. So congratulations and thank you to those who contributed. I also had a lot of residents reach out to me regarding Harborside specifically, the existence of the fuel station and whether or not the fueling station and the marina can, for lack of a better term, be bulldozed for residents. I do, when you all come up and make comments and when you reach out to me personally, I always follow up with city staff, and I specifically followed up with Mr. Tyner and Mr. DeLorenzo on this very issue. And I was delighted to receive a very detailed response from Mr. Tyner. And he said that, as indicated in the MPD, Lot 1 uses are specific for marina operations, slips, retail, ship store. Lot 1 and Lot 2 are limited to retail, restaurant, and ship store. Any proposed change for residential development on lots 1 or 2 would require a modification to the MPD Development Agreement. A modification to the MPD would require a public process, which includes neighborhood meeting, legal notices, public hearing, and recommendation by PLDRB, and two public hearings and final action by City Council. So for those who are fearful that the fueling station can just go away and be bulldozed in favor of residential lots, that cannot be done legally without coming back to City Council and going through the PLDRB process.
And just, just to add to that, that, that also relates to the restaurant space as well.
Correct. That's Lots 1 and 2.
So nothing else can ever be there without the procedures you just spoke about, other than a restaurant?
Absolutely, yes. Mr. McDonald, I do want to let you know that your concerns regarding safety were taken very seriously. I specifically met with Ms. Bevan and Ms. Johnson on the 13th, and that was a topic of discussion. Without disclosing any of the procedures or mechanisms that our Flagler County Sheriff's Office uses to keep our parks safe, I will tell you that they take it very seriously, and that there are several mechanisms that are used for park safety. I can't tell you how to feel as a grandfather, as a resident, when you go to those parks, but I think that you should rest assured that they are being patrolled, they are being monitored in multiple different ways by our Flagler County Sheriff's Office, and it is a topic of discussion between city staff and the sheriff's office on a weekly basis. And I apologize for not getting back to you personally. I do encourage filling out the comment cards, because city staff does get those to us, so I would have your contact information if you do that, or you're always welcome to email me as well. And then just one more thing, Mayor.
Please.
April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. On the 31st of March, there's a national movement to wear blue to raise awareness for child abuse prevention, so I would encourage our residents to do so. And there's also a virtual Teen Town Hall that's being sponsored and hosted by our Flagler County School Board, and that is on the 30th of March. It's going to be addressing bullying, dating violence, sexting, and human trafficking. These are just some great things that are really good for our mental health, for our youth in the community, which I think is important. Obviously, children are our future, so really encourage our community to take advantage of some of these things that are coming up.
Very good, thank you. And just to, to highlight your, your, your discussion on safety, since, since that comment was first made, I've seen a release, if I'm not mistaken, it was one of the large media outlets ranked the city of Palm Coast as it was either the second or third safest city.
Number two.
Number two.
Number two.
In the entire state of Florida. That doesn't mean we can't be number one, but I can assure you that everyone up here is dedicated to improving the safety, working closely with the sheriff to make sure that, hopefully, we can attain that number-one position sooner than later. So thank you for that effort. Councilperson?
Yes, I'd just like to share that I was also a part of the Drug Court this past week, and I was, it was a privilege to be able to attend. I am also a part of the Veterans Court out of Volusia County, and the judge at the Drug Court, he did mention that maybe we should look at bringing a Veterans Court here to Flagler County, which I also think would be a, a good idea, because we do have somewhere between, I believe it's 12,000 and 13,000 veterans in the county of, in Flagler County. And also, sir, I'd like to comment on the comments that you made regarding the invocation and the moment of silence. I appreciate your making the comment that we should honor our fallen and also our military and all those that have served this country in any capacity. Speaking of which, our veterans, our first responders, ghost army military families, and also local community heroes. So I think, I appreciate your comment. Thank you so much.
Counsel, thank you, thank you for that. Councilman?
Absolutely. I would echo all, all of the comments and gratitude all the way down. I would also just highlight that tonight is Food Truck Tuesday, and I'm looking forward to that. That's always something that I love to attend, so I encourage everybody to check that out. And thank you, guys, for an amazing City Council meeting.
Thank you. City Attorney, are there any final comments that you would like to make today?
I have nothing.
Thank you. And Assistant City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your consensus and direction on the surveys. We hope to move that forward as part of operations in your agenda packet. And then the last item was, Mr. Martin had the invitation for touring the mosquito-controlled district facility. We're happy to set that up for you as well. That's all.
Can I fly the helicopter?
No.
It's offering.
Very good. All right, and the, the report doesn't require any action on our part. So with that, I would thank the remaining members of the public for coming together with us today. Bring a friend next time. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion?
I have a motion and a second. We are now adjourned. Thank you all.
Hey, Doug, I can't close out.